Member Gazy, you have the next question.
Yes. Can you describe how you would put a new system or policy or procedure in place? And I'd love to hear specific examples from your experience that describe the process from envisioning and collaboration to implementation and monitoring?
Sure, Holly, I'm kind of thinking here. I think what first pops in my mind, Holly, is when I first came to Keene, we saw a number of, or our statistics around restraint were very high, around restraint and seclusion. And they were so high that I was really shocked by it. I hadn't seen anything quite like that in my professional career. And I was very concerned. I come from, and this is important too, I come from a philosophy where we just, in public schools, you just simply do not put your hands on kids. You de-escalate volatile situations and you meet kids where they are, but you do not put hands on students. And when I came to Keene, again, there was a really high statistical number of restraints and seclusions, most notably in our elementary school. And I could tell that there needed to be some sort of system around safety and addressing volatile behavior with students. And there was a system in place, it was called CPI, Crisis Prevention Institute. It's the Crisis Prevention Institute. And they have different interventions that you can put into place to help in the public school setting. And, you know, I came on board, that practice was in place, we had this very high number of restraints and seclusions. So I did some research and I tried to look at other systems that approached that situation differently, students that were having major difficulties. And we found a system called Safety Cares. And it is, there's much less language in this system. There's also opportunities for students to recover and come out with positive outcomes. And there's also a significant amount of accountability for staff training. So, for example, in Safety Care, we could only train 10 people at once. And you have to go through a 12 and a half hour training process. So there's quite a bit of rigor to this. And when I compare it to the system that we had prior to my arrival, there was very little accountability. They would train 40, 50, 60 people all at once. And people could kind of leave the room halfway through, or when they felt they had enough. And, you know, I could tell that the faculty, the teachers themselves wanted a more robust system around student behavior. And I worked to put that new system in place, Holly, and, you know, it's doing really well. We met this afternoon. We have trainers in every building. So we have 13 buildings. We have trainers throughout all of our districts. And there, so we've embedded these trainers, paid the trainers a stipend, and it's typically school counselors or behavior specialists in some way. And, you know, it's been a number of years now, and the system really is thriving. We just scheduled our annual training, we added certain modules, we added a kindergarten age module to this training to help with, you know, little bodies and littler people. And yeah, it's a system that I put in place, and I'm really proud of it. I think the approach I took, Holly, was trying to get grassroots movement first. I noticed that the teachers and the support staff, so our paraprofessionals, wanted a more robust system. And, but I don't think they knew how to get there. And I just simply had the prior experience and I tried to bring it in. I got buy-in from teachers and from the principals. And from there, the superintendent and I moved forward with this new system. And it's been successful, quite successful. And I verify that through the number of restraints and seclusions that we have now, Holly, and it's far, far, far fewer. So that's how we're measuring that. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Agna, you're next.
Hi, Rick. My name's Gwen Agna. My question is, please share with us your philosophy of assessment and examples of types of assessments that you believe paint a comprehensive picture of a student's level, both their strengths and challenges. And part two is, how best would you or the teachers that you supervise present your findings to the student's caregivers?
Sure, Gwen. In terms of assessment, I think of assessment in really two general ways. The first general way would be, you know, all students being benchmarked on certain instructional areas. For example, you, a classroom would probably want to benchmark their entire class in reading to see where they are and to identify those students that are flying high and can, you know, continue to move forward and have enriched curriculum, but also probably more importantly, identifying those readers that are struggling so we can intervene as soon as possible. And to me, assessment tools, Gwen, for that would be things like AIMS Web. I think AIMS Web is our primary benchmarking tool that we're using now. But also, there's a certain, there's a lot of value in teacher-created assessments and the assessments that teachers have from their own perspective and how they can kind of evaluate or gauge a student's learning. So I think it's really important to believe in teacher-created assessments and what they believe. So those are two areas. And I mentioned two, but I really meant three, Gwen. There's kind of like the benchmark assessments that you would do district-wide. There's teacher assessments that would measure student learning. And then the third area would be special education or Section 504 assessment. And to best illustrate a student's, I guess, learning profile, is I would look for the team to do a comprehensive assessment, not just an evaluation in one area, but look at a student's cognitive functioning as well as their academic functioning and their emotional functioning. I think that's really, really important is to look at, really look at the whole student and not just the instructional part of a kid, but to really look at the whole child. And assessment is a big part of that. I really feel as though schools should measure everything in their school mission. You know, when I look at a school mission statement, they're usually these, you know, really grand things. And to me, those are all the things that should be measured. And it's so much more than just reading, writing, and math. It's, you know, kids define themselves as students. And I really, really think it's important to recognize them as whole people. And in terms of presenting assessment findings, Gwen, I think it's, in my opinion, it's really important to keep it simple. And as a school psychologist, I've done a fair amount of presenting assessment results. And, you know, I tend to keep it, I tend to keep it simple. And I want the parents and teachers and administrators to have probably no more than three significant takeaways about a student. What are the three most important things I want this team to learn and know? And that's how, and that's how I tend to work, Gwen. I have colleagues who are much more complex and, you know, much more maybe articulate in their presenting of assessment findings, but the audience is often lost. You know, and if I wanted to, I could dazzle assessment teams with statistics and all sorts of things, but I don't think that's important. It's not in the best interest of students. I think it's important to really keep it simple. I think assessment is very important, but I think it's important to keep it simple and to keep it comprehensive and focus on the whole student. So.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Member Gazy, we are back to you.
Much of the IEP focuses on what a student can't yet do. As the mother of a child with special needs, I was brought to tears at most of his IEP meetings. The litany of low scores and unmet goals made me fear for the future of my child. How can we better support parents who feel out of step with the mainstream, isolated, and often guilty? Please give your thoughts on ways to strengthen the CPAC, build community for parents and children, and highlight the strengths of these children.
Sure, there, Holly. CPAC, what does that stand for?
Special Education Parent Advisory Committee.
Okay. So I have, I also have a parent group, and it's called the Special Ed Advisory Committee. We call it CAC for short. So I'm familiar with parent groups. And, you know, for our, so our parent group focuses on bringing in younger parents that may have had a really difficult time themselves in school and may get really intimidated when they have to go into school for their kids, or when they have to go into a school meeting, or, you know, God forbid, a special education meeting. That could be really, really hard for parents. And I recognize that in my work. And our parent group meets on the second Tuesday, every month at 3:30. But more importantly, we really work on recruiting those people that need support in working with their students through public school. And we've had times, Holly, when there's been really low turnout. And the members of the group will, you know, will talk about ways to recruit more members. And actually, just today, I am actually, I reached out to special administrators to help identify parents that could come join the group so it would be more vibrant. We had the parent group that I work with, the Special Ed Advisory Council, had, it was a webinar last month in January, and the webinar was entitled, "What's in Your Child's IEP?" And basically, what we did during the webinar is how, we had 20 people on the call, and which was a wonderful turnout. And I think the reason why we had so many people is because it was virtual. We used to do, before the pandemic hit, we'd do things in person. And my parent advisory group would get one or two or three people. And it was somewhat demoralizing, but we stuck with it. And we have four webinars a year. We just had one last month, that was "What's in Your Child's IEP?" And again, it was attended by 20 people. And I am thrilled by that because that's 20 more families that are going to come into our meetings and be that much more confident about what's going on. I also think too, it's important, Holly, to focus on, you know, where the child is and what strengths the child has. And I think it's important to be aware of how meetings can sometimes turn really negative. Like you said, it can focus on failing grades or failing experiences in school. And when I think that happens, excuse me, when that happens, I think it's really important to kind of change the dialogue and focus on what the student can do. And, you know, I don't want to be all Pollyannaish either, but if, you know, there may be a discussion among the team members where the goals are changed, or where, you know, you change the target for a particular outcome. And I think the most important thing is having the parents be part of that and allowing them to have control and say, make sure that they're heard in the meeting. I think if you can accomplish those things, Holly, I think you can move forward in that way. I know, when you were asking your question about, you mentioned your child and how those IEP meetings brought you to tears at times. As a special ed director, that's really hard for me to hear. And when I sit in meetings that are, it doesn't happen often, but when I'm in a meeting that is really negative and it's, and the parent is hurting and I can tell, I try to change that because that's not productive. I do hear you on that, Holly. That must have been a challenging experience. And I just think making sure that parents are heard, that parents have control, and that parents understand, and that you don't give up on them. You set a target date in the future and you follow up. So you kind of keep on keeping on. So I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Member Agna.
So, Rick, in contentious team meetings, where the goals of the caregivers can differ from those of the professionals, how have you worked to keep the needs of the student at the forefront and not get distracted by blame games?
Yeah. Good question, Gwen. Sometimes there are disagreements among professionals. And, you know, I think that that's healthy because, in a way, people are speaking their mind and people are talking about students from a passionate perspective. However, I don't think that should play out in front of a parent. I really think that those things should be discussed ahead of time. And I don't want to suggest that any decision should be made ahead of time. That would be awful. But I do think the team needs to kind of get their ducks in a row a little bit ahead of time. And then, I believe, it's the administrator's job to work these different groups of people toward consensus. So everybody may not entirely agree, but if we can all work towards some common consensus, and then also pledge to continue to monitor the situation and follow up at a date in the near future to see how things are going, I think that's really the way to go with that, with that, Gwen, is just try to, in a way, hash it out a little bit beforehand so it doesn't happen in front of parents, because that's unprofessional and that, you know, end up playing the blame game and things don't get accomplished. But trying to work towards consensus and then setting a date in the future, monitoring where the situation goes, and then addressing it if needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next is member Miller.
Hi. So my question is, how will you make sure that all caregivers have a meaningful voice in understanding of their child's education?
Can you say that again, member Miller?
Sure. How will you make sure that all caregivers have a meaningful voice in understanding their children's education?
That's a good question, member Miller. I certainly feel or strongly believe that when people come together and meet, especially in a public school environment, that everybody needs to be heard. I'm doing a lot of talking tonight, but I am often a person that sits and does a lot of listening. And when I attend meetings, as an administrator, it's really important for me to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to participate. And that's not always done by airtime, and there's other meaningful ways to participate in meetings. But I feel strongly as an administrator that it's important that everybody have a voice, even if that voice is different than others, or if that voice has an opposite point of view, it's important that everybody's heard and that nobody feel marginalized or left out of the system. That's really, really important to me. How I actually do that, member Miller, I'm having trouble kind of putting that into words. But it is very important for me, and I am astute and sensitive to the behavior of people. And I can often sense when people feel left out or pushed aside. And I'm a person that's not bashful about, although I am quiet and I do a lot of listening, I'm not bashful about making sure that other people are heard and people's voices are part of the decision-making process. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Member Seraphie Cox, you have the next question?
Yes, thank you. Hi, Dr. Maddie. My name is Emily Seraphie Cox. My question is, this position requires balancing a significant amount of both time-sensitive tasks as well as budgetary considerations, including the daily processing of IEPs for over 600 students, monitoring proportionate share for our district, completing the circuit breaker, sped increment, preparing presentations for the school committee, grant writing and submission, DESI reporting, providing case management for our out-of-district students, supporting our special education faculty, and on and on. Of course, caregiver communications, et cetera. So my question for you is, how have your previous positions and just experiences in general prepared you for managing such a wide array of responsibilities? And what are some strategies that you find useful in balancing it all, both in terms of your personal time and also the budget needs that exist within the district?
First thing, Emily, in terms of managing my time, I tend to, my general philosophy is to do the hard things in the morning when I'm most fresh. So I try to, you know, things that are really, really challenging, I try to hit those first. And then, I feel, I typically feel better as the day goes on because I'm a little less anxious, because I got those harder things done earlier in the day. That's kind of generally how I work. But in terms of kind of the details to your questions, I do have experience managing large amounts of IEPs. So right now, we have an IEP caseload in Keene, New Hampshire of about 750 students. So I am able to look at, I guess, just large IEP databases and understand how they remain in compliance under the IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. I do have a strong understanding of IEP development and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, because I've been doing it every day for about 16 years. I also have extensive experience with grant writing, Emily. I write seven IDEA grants every year. And those IDEA grants are used exclusively for students with disabilities, and they have to enhance and strengthen the programming for students with disabilities. And I work with principals, I work with teachers, I get input from them, and then I write those grants and we get that, they're entitlement grants, so we get the money. But yeah, but it's tricky stuff. It's sometimes really, really hard to word things in a way that would best help students at the local level. So we have to write these grants for the state folks and the federal grants. And I've just learned ways in how to use language to really leverage grant money to help students with disabilities. The other thing is, in terms of the budget, for me, Emily, it's really important to look at what other effective districts are doing. So I will often call or contact directors in Bedford, or Hanover, or Portsmouth, and sometimes get an idea of what the metric is around a particular concept. So I think what I'm getting at is, I would try to use industry standards to make responsible decisions around the budget. And in making those kind of industry decisions, I look at metrics from high-functioning school districts and try to apply that to my practice. You know, I want teachers to have very manageable caseloads in special education. And in order to do that, I need to know what is manageable. And my approach is to call other high-functioning districts, see what their metrics say, and then try to apply that to the job that I do. So.
Thank you. I also have the next question. Can you please describe your experience working in diverse school districts, including specific populations, and concrete efforts to create more inclusive, equitable schools for the student populations you serve, who may be historically excluded versus affirmed in the school community? And I recognize that in part you've discussed this before, but maybe delving a little bit deeper into the IEP process and how you will make sure caregivers who say don't have access to, say, hire an advocate, how will you ensure that their students still receive the equal access to education?
Sure. In terms of diversity, I've worked in school districts that have students that are quite wealthy, and then there are students that aren't wealthy. And you could go to different schools in the city of Keene or other places I've worked and really seen that diversity. So I used to think of, you know, the first day of school, we used to go from, the first day of school, the administrators would go from school to school and just welcome and introduce the new school year. And I remember going to different school buildings and really noticing that the socioeconomic status of our students were quite a bit different when I looked, when you compared students in one school compared to students in another school. And the economic diversity of the neighborhood is not really something that the school addresses per se, but the school certainly does address equity. And we are always talking as an administrative team to make sure that the schools in our less affluent neighborhoods have just as many opportunities, if not more, than the students in our affluent neighborhoods. So, for example, here in Keene, we have a school on the east side, Franklin Elementary School, that is in a very challenging, diverse part of town. And then we have a school on the west side, it's kind of like a little country club kind of school. And it's much more affluent on the west side. What we've done is, on the east side, is we we have had, that's where we have our magnet program for ELL students is on the east side of school. So it serves the students where they are the most. They don't have to travel as far. And we did that purposely. Also, it becomes a hub for a lot of the international parents in our community over at Franklin Elementary School. And we just really, really strive to make sure that there is equity in not just kind of material things at the school, but equity in terms of expertise and that there's equity with professional staff. And it's just really, really important to make sure that we keep the schools equal. In terms of the IEP process, I feel as though, Emily, it's really important to to explain to parents, especially parents that feel marginalized, that the IEP tells a story. It tells a story from the very beginning where there's present levels, and then there's measurable goals. And then it usually works into a transition plan, and then there's placement. And when I work with parents that are mystified or intimidated around the IEP process, I I try to explain to them that it tells a simple story about your child and that you, as the parent, are the most important person in the room, and you need to speak up and understand this. And with my kind of story analogy, I've had some success with that because I think most people can relate to that. It's hard for a lot of people to relate to a very technical, thick IEP document. But when you tell them it tells a story and it tells the story of their child, then it 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 becomes more meaningful to them. And I've had, I've had success with that. So I hope that answers your question, Emily.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next member Levy is up.
Thanks so much. We've had the opportunity to hear your thoughts on supporting students, supporting caregivers, and I I would love to focus our attention just a bit on supporting teachers. As we think, especially about this time during a time of staffing shortages, the mental health crisis of students and staff and student needs on the rise, how will you support special education teachers whose caseloads are high and who feel they can't meet the services they're required to provide for their students?
That's a good question, Dina. Thank you for that. You know, it's really, really important, especially nowadays, to support teachers. We are short-staffed in our public schools right now, and teachers do have a significant load to carry. In terms of supporting teachers, I felt, Dina, that's, it's important to diversify professional development. So in my work as the director, I have worked to listen to teachers and try to create professional development opportunities that are most meaningful to them. So rather than having kind of all the teachers focused on one thing and one area on a workshop day, we really work hard to individualize and diversify that day for particular groups of teachers or particular individual individual teachers. And that's actually quite a bit more work for administrators, but I think it's quite a bit more meaningful for teachers. I've also tried, Dina, to outsource what I can as an administrator to give teachers more time with students. So for example, when it's possible to outsource and 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 an evaluation, so let's say we have a special ed referral and teachers have academic evaluations to do. We will often outsource that evaluation and have it done by a local university so the teacher or teachers can have more time in the classroom and with the students. And outsourcing some work has been, has been really, really helpful. And we've leveraged grant dollars to help pay for those evaluations. We do the same thing with school psychologists. When counseling loads become really, really high, we often will outsource some of their evaluation work so they can spend more time with students and and teachers too, consulting with teachers. So I hope that answers your question, Dina.
Okay, member Stein, you have the next question.
Hi, Rick. Thanks for answering all these questions for us. My question is, given the disruptive effects of the pandemic on our earliest learners, can you share how you would guide our district to best assess students for dyslexia or other specific learning disabilities and allow for early intervention for those students that need it?
Sure thing, member Stein. I, yeah, when the when the pandemic hit, it was, it was a challenging time for everybody. And I was most concerned about students with disabilities that couldn't learn through a computer or you know, that really couldn't access the curriculum remotely. And I worked really hard to, even though there was a pandemic, to still have students come into the school building and receive in-person services because you know, there's just some students that can't get a meaningful educational experience over the computer. So I was really proud of that. We had students coming into the building three, four, five days a week and getting in-person services during the pandemic. And again, there weren't, you know, the entire student body wasn't in the building. It was just a very select group of students getting getting the services that they need. We also beefed up our summer programming after God, all the, all the years run together now, the school years run together. But after the 2020 year, we really worked, after the 20, yeah, 2020 year, we worked hard to beef up our summer curriculum for students and we expanded that summer opportunity learning experience for kids because of the pandemic. And and I was proud of that because we had larger numbers coming into in into summer school. In terms of dyslexia, I think it's really important to provide early intervention. And I actually, my dissertation was on the precursors to dyslexia. And I think it's really important to make sure that students, when they're, when they're young, know their letters and know the sounds of it. And it sounds very basic, but students that are taught their letters and taught the sounds of their letters at a very young age tend to develop or tend to become better readers. Students that don't have the access to letters and, you know, working on the alphabet and things like that will have a much harder time potentially learning how to read later on. So there are screening measures that schools can do, such as rapid naming or phonemic awareness assessments that can predict a student's reading ability with tremendous accuracy. So I guess, I guess what I'm getting at, member Stein, is I think it's important for public school districts to do robust and vibrant screenings when kids are three and four years old to prevent reading difficulties down the road. And I feel as though I do have the system know-how in order to do that effectively because I know kind of the neuropsych, neuropsychological underpinnings that lead to effective reading. And kids can be taught those things in a very, before they even begin looking at a letter or sounding out a word. They can, they can learn the, the kind of the basics of reading and then have a much easier time when they come to school, you know, in beginning and when they start to read to learn. Instead of learning to read, they start to read to learn and then they can really take off. I hope that makes sense. I I do have a fair amount of experience with early intervention, especially when it comes to reading development. So yeah, I'm just, I'm getting tired too. So I apologize if I'm rambling a little bit.
No, thank you for your answer.
I think we're all in the same boat, Dr. Maddie. Thank you so much. That was actually our last question. So thank you so much for answering all those and so in in such depth. And now is your opportunity to ask us any questions that you may have for us?
I was trying to think earlier of questions. And you know, I I can't think of anything, Madam Mayor, off the top of my head. You know, North Hampton has always been a really interesting place to me. And in a lot of ways, I think Keene, New Hampshire is kind of similar to North Hampton in that we do have a progressive nature to what we do. I think we do care about marginalized people in Keene. We care about people who are in the shadows. And I I see North Hampton as being similar in a lot of ways. And I've really enjoyed my work here. And I just feel as though North Hampton would be a, are also a really interesting and what's the right word? Just a a rich and rewarding place to work. I guess a question, Madam Mayor, would be, are you looking for someone to work on maybe a three-year contract? Or is it more of a like, does, I'm trying to think, is it like a two- or three-year contract for your administrators? Or is it a year-to-year kind of thing? That's one question that I thought of.
Thank you. Dr. Provost, would would you be able to assist on that?
Sure, absolutely. I will say there's an executive session requested at the end of this meeting to talk about some of those details. However, three-year contracts for administrators in Massachusetts are very commonplace.
Yeah, and that that's what, that's what I, that's what I had heard. So, yeah, that that kind of connects with what I understand, Dr. Provost. It's much, it's not so common in New Hampshire, but I know it's common in other places. So thank you for that.
Okay, if you have no further questions for us, I'll just thank you again very much for joining us and being here and answering all of this and and for your willingness to participate. So thank you.
You know, Madam Mayor, I have one more question, if you don't mind.
Not at all, please.
I'm wondering, how how often would there be night meetings with disposition? I'm in night meetings quite a bit now, probably twice a week, sometimes three times a week. And I'm wondering if that would be the case in North Hampton.
Um, Dr. Provost, is there anything special to know about this position that I wouldn't know in terms of meetings?
No, you would, you'd be able to answer this one.
Okay, so, so regular school committee meetings are generally once a month, a Thursday evening a month. And so unless there are subcommittee meetings that you'd be invited to, which often are a little bit earlier than school committee meetings, hopefully not.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure. We appreciate you coming.
All right. Thank you all very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. You too. Bye-bye. Okay. So we are now at the point in the evening where we need to vote. So what we are looking for is a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into contract negotiations with one of the candidates. So it would be that motion to enter into contract negotiations, and you would, you would name a candidate. Make sure that I can see all of you. Member Levy.
I move to support the superintendent's entering into negotiations with Josh. I forget Josh's last name.
Dixon.
Dixon, thank you.
Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by member Levy and seconded by member Gazy. And now discussion. Uh, member Levy, did you want to speak to that, to your motion?
Yeah, I'll just speak quickly to say I thought both candidates clearly have a passion for their work, and I really, really appreciate their commitment and their experiences and getting to to learn more about all that they've accomplished in their careers. To me, Josh, Josh's responses and experiences were more comprehensive. And I, I really appreciated his perspectives on supporting students, caregivers, and educators.
Thank you. Member Seraphie Cox.
Yeah, um, I mean, I think that it speaks to the both the the wealth of educational just resources and and emphasis that exists in this region that we had two very capable and and impressive candidates. I actually feel like I would be happy to support a motion for either one of them. It's interesting, Dina, that you said that that Josh's answers, you know, felt more comprehensive to you. My, I was thinking about what they were both saying about, you know, making sure that that information is comprehensible to parents who are feeling triggered, scared, overwhelmed by the process. And I, you know, was sitting there as my ADHD medicine is wearing off and I I found myself able to follow what Rick was was saying more easily. And, you know, interviews are places where nerves interfere with our ability to make clear statements. But I that was just one thing that that I noticed was was the sort of engaging and and warm manner of Rick. So as I said, I I feel like I could support either of of these candidates, but was was impressed by by that with Rick as well as the sort of specific implementation of especially the the different protocols around restraints and so forth. Of course, we as a district utilize the very protocols that he was saying he was worried about when he came into his district. So that really piqued my interest as well.
You. I saw another hand, but I think it went down. Is there other discussion? Member Miller.
I thought that Josh Dixon's answers were a little bit more comprehensive and in-depth. I found, Dr., was, I'm sorry, Maddie, his responses were somewhat vague to me and generalized, and I didn't actually feel like he always answered the question. So I guess my only concern about the both of them is that there wasn't a wide breadth of experience. wide breadth of experience in different types of districts or communities. And I actually thought that perhaps, um, because Josh Dixon has worked here, he's been exposed to some, uh, more, uh, greater diversity of students. And I felt like I had some concerns about Dr. Maddie's, um, experience with a less diverse community. And anyway, so I guess at this point I would lean towards, um, supporting the motion to, uh, support Josh Dixon. Although I, I guess we don't have any, uh, any applicants that have broader length of experience. He's rather, you know, but I think he would be good for the job.
Thank you. Member Stein.
Um, this'll echo some of the comments my colleagues have made as well. But, um, you know, when I look at sort of the job application materials and the sort of the questions we laid out tonight and the answers that were given, they do seem like, um, different candidates in some regards. You know, it's, it's clear that, um, Dr. Matt, uh, Matty has a lot more experience running a district or, you know, the way it's set up, there were seven districts of comparable size. I did love the fact that both of them were really attuned towards the experience of caregivers and centering the importance of how you make, um, these conversations and these decisions. Like comfortable, non-combative and really focusing on success. That was also something I really appreciated that uh, Mr. Dixon emphasized. And, you know, I think for a question of fit, um, along with what member Miller was saying, I think that it could be the case that Josh might be, um, a better fit for the district. Um, but in either case, I don't see any reason to go against the committee's recommendation who spent more time with the material. So I'm, I'm inclined to support the motion as well.
Thank you. Member Davis.
Uh, thank you. Um, uh, I also, uh, support the motion. I wanted to, uh, I, I noticed that both candidates mentioned, uh, English language learners as, as an area that they, um, felt less confidence in, um, in answer to that particular question, which I, was interesting, um, to me. Dr. Maddie, um, mentioned that he was the first person in his family to go to college or to graduate from college, which while I support the motion, I just think that I've got the compelling experience that he has, that he would get the kids that aren't necessarily uh, or the families in which college isn't, um, on the radar or, or right, right then. And I think that's important that, that he would understand, automatically understand a kid like that. Um, and, um, my last comment is, is that, um, Josh's answer regarding how he prioritizes or figures out how to balance the wide-ranging responsibilities in this job was much more detailed. Like while acknowledging that you might get pulled away from something, he had some very clear ideas that made sense to me about, um, how to attempt to, to balance all those things. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Miller, is your hand up again or did it? No, okay. Okay. Other. I think member Miller, I keep putting it down and we keep putting it down simultaneously, which means it gets put back up. So I'm going to put it, I'm going to put it down. You'll tell me if you want it up. Um, other, other discussion or comments? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, uh, Annie, I think that we are ready for a roll call, please.
Member Gazy.
So I should give a name.
No, the motion on the floor is to enter into negotiations with Josh Dixon.
Agree. Yes, whatever.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Skara.
Yes.
Vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Um, so now I believe we are going to go into executive session. So would someone?
I will make a motion to request to enter executive session under Massachusetts General Law, open meeting, chapter 30A, section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining section or contract negotiations with nomination, with, uh, non-union personnel. And to, or to discuss strategy with respective collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares.
Thank you. I need a second, yes?
Second.
Okay. Um, so we need a roll call, please, Annie. And I'm going to announce that we will be adjourning from the executive session. So we will not be coming back into, um, an open public session. So thank you all who joined us this evening. Um, we'll be saying goodnight to you now. Thank you. All right, Annie.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Skara.
Yes.
And member Gazy.
Yes.
Okay. We are going into executive session. Look for that agenda. As people are exiting.